Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Halton Catholic District School Board Policy Committee Meeting for June 14th, 2022. Please be advised that we are live streaming this meeting, and it will be available on the board's YouTube account. Please note that this month is National Indigenous History Month, which is a time for acknowledging, learning about, and appreciating the immeasurable contributions of First Nations Inuit and Métis that have made and continue to make today. This is also Pride Month, where we celebrate diversity and let friends and family know they are seen and help everyone feel accepted. I'd like to start this meeting off with a land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today-
Is rich in the history and modern traditions-
Of many First Nations and the Métis-
From the lands of the Anishinaabe-
To the Atawandaran-
The Haudenosaunee-
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly-
Are steeped in Indigenous history-
As we gather today-
On these treaty lands-
Our Catholic social teachings-
Call us in solidarity-
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters-
To honor and respect-
The four directions-
Lands-
Waters-
Plants-
Omnivores-
And ancestors-
That walked before us-
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist-
Gifted to us by our Creator Gok-
We acknowledge and thank-
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation-
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Now, I would like to call on Trustee O'Brien to lead us in our opening prayer.
Thank you. If we can all please make the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, before I go into this meeting, I still myself before you, for you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about me. Help me to listen before speaking. Help me to fully understand people before making my case. Help me to value and appreciate the ones I'm about to listen to before thinking my own concerns and anxieties. May your light unfold me. May your spirit guide me. May your grace abound in me. This is my prayer. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Trustee O'Brien, moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Can I have someone move, please, that we accept the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Trustee Agnew moves. Seconded by?
Trustee O'Brien.
Trustee Carabala, I see you have your hand up. Is it in regards to the agenda?
Yes, it is, Mrs. Chair. Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Trustee Carabala.
Thank you so much. I had two items. One was to, if it's agreed with the other trustees, is to add on a discussion item regarding the, and I thought it was related with our information security, but regarding the dignity and privacy of students or staff in health emergencies that happen at schools. Is that enough, or just to explain, it could be students filming things that happen?
I'm not sure. Is it in regards to a policy? What policy are you referencing, Trustee Carabala?
That's what I don't know and would like to discuss, if that could be put in. Maybe if we have it a discussion item now and in the future, we can find out where we could just put this in a policy, or is there an existing policy where-
There is an existing policy. We just actually passed it, if I'm not mistaken. And give me a second. It actually falls under, I think it was progressive discipline.
That dealt with medical emergencies and the privacy-
Okay, so you said videotaping, sorry, recording.
Yeah, like of medical emergencies that happen at schools or-
Okay, well, yeah, I'm not sure. Trustee Superintendent Bakaij. I'm calling on you because I'm trying to figure this out here. I don't know if there's a policy per se, but okay, so maybe we could just add it as a discussion item then, and we can figure out what exactly we're talking about. So I think we need for that to be added, we need just a simple majority for a discussion item?
I think if we're following our bylaws, it's two-thirds majority-
For a discussion item?
Yes. And unanimous for a action item.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, what was the second thing, Trustee Carabala?
Oh, thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, is regarding item 7.1 is a discussion item, and I was wondering that it should be moved to an action item?
No, because there's not, we don't have a, we don't have a policy, so how do we move it to an action item?
I think, okay, well, it was discussed at the board meeting that it would be part of the-
That it would be reverted, it would be sent to, sent to policy for discussion, is what I-
For discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so trustees, so we'll vote on Trustee Carabala's addition to add her item for the discussion. So you move it, Trustee Carabala? Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa. Take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabala.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chenota.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee, I got Trustee DeRosa, right? I don't, Trustee DeRosa. And do we have any students online this evening? So this is, so I apologize in advance for my dog's barking in the background. I'm gonna have to go to a different, a whole different area of the house. So it's passed. We'll add that on. I'm so sorry, everybody. I'm trying to move and they're following me. So that'll be added, so moving on. Sorry about that. Okay, so moving on to item three, declarations of conflict of interest. Trustees, do we have any declarations? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, delegations. We have no delegations. Item five, approval of the minutes for May 10th, 2022. Trustees, can I have somebody please move that we accept the minutes for May 10th, 2022? Were there any errors or additions?
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chenota, thank you. Seconded by?
Duert.
Trustee Duert. Anybody opposed?
Madam Chair, I will be abstaining because I was absent from that meeting.
Okay, so then I will, so we've got one abstention. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, I will do the same.
Okay, then what I'll do is I'll take it to a recorded vote, because I think it'll just be easier. So Trustee Carabala, you're an abstention. Trustee DeRosa, abstention. Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Chenota.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Favor.
I'm also in favor. Okay. So moving on to item six, action items, policy six point, or so, action item 6.1. I'm sorry, everybody, I'm just trying to get my bearings this evening. I'm a little off. So trustees, can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that policy I-47, information security, be forwarded to the June 21st, 2022, regular board meeting for approval at the second and third reading?
Duert.
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chenota, seconded by?
Second.
Oh, Trustee Agnew, okay. Trustee Agnew, thank you. Okay, and we have Mark Grischak with us here with, I believe, some changes after our first reading. So if you can just maybe walk us through that, I'd much appreciate it.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so as you all know, we had, we sent out sought feedback, and we had some really good responses. Some responses were maybe not so good in terms of, you know, really focusing on what it is we were looking for. I've incorporated some of the feedback already into the, to the policy itself. The other point I want to make is that the, the, a lot of the feedback that came in was more relevant for our procedure. So the, our stakeholders really did not have a chance to look at the procedure, which spoke to some of the more, the requirements that are more procedural in nature. So that being said, good feedback, incorporated the feedback into I-47. If we go, if we can scroll down a little bit here, and to the rights, a little further down. Yeah, keep going, keep going. Okay, so right here, so what I, what, really what we need to do with a security policy is really at a very high level, what's the goal we want to accomplish here? And it's really to protect confidentiality, integrity, and availability of HCDSP information. So there was a comment about, what is HCDSP information? Well, I mean, maybe we need to, I don't think we need to explain that. It really, it is what it is. And the, what's important here is that we look at the confidentiality, the integrity, and the availability of it, and that's really what the security policy will do. The second thing is complying with legal and regulatory requirements, specifically the Municipal Freedom, Information Protection, and Privacy Act. If we're in compliance with that act and following the rules specified in that act, then we are really in a good, good place. And then, of course, number three, just take all mandatory training. If you go down a little bit further, so there was some feedback about incorporating, you know, network controls, security controls, and the terminology used, obviously, one of our stakeholders is a security practitioner, which is great, because that's what I was hoping for. But rather than get into the more technical terminology, I brought it up a little bit, another level, and defined that as boundary and internal network controls, which is, in the procedure, is defined a little bit more. And that's really Bill's job in IT to ensure that that is all in place. And then the other slight edit was just ensuring that staff are signed off that they've reviewed the policy. That's it. Everything else that is sort of diving into what you need to do is in the procedure. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mark. So first up, we have Trustee O'Brien. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this question is actually directed to you. I see in the motion that it says, it's going for second and third readings. So will that require a free report?
So because of all the changes, if I'm not mistaken, it goes to a second, and it still has to come back. Both cannot be done together unless we decide. So I'm at the head of the board.
So the motion says second and third. So will that only be second then?
Okay, so we have, we're getting feedback, so if the three of you are in the room together, make sure you're not turning on your mics all at the same time. I think Trustee Duert's got his mic on. Just make sure that you don't have both of your mics on at the same time. That's all. So just give me one second, Trustee O'Brien.
Yes. So 100 no worries. So we need to turn on speaker and mic.
So it can, yes, we do need two-thirds majority to get second and third. If not, it'll just go for a second and then come back for a third.
My understanding is it would take three-quarters to get a second and third at once.
Three-quarters. You're right. My apologies, I said two-thirds. It's actually three-quarters.
No worries. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll get back in the queue.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
You guys are downed up?
Yep.
Just hit your- Got it? Perfect. Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, just a question to Mark, if that's okay?
Yes.
So Mark, when you, I don't want to be the person that doesn't understand what you mean by HCDSP property, but when you reference that, would that also pertain to email addresses that are emails that are coming into the boards from outside individuals?
Yeah, so that's a great question, Trustee, Trustee Agnew. And I would say, yeah, the answer would be yes. So that's how, is any information that really requires or has a requirement to be protected from unauthorized use or exposure, disclosure?
Okay. Follow-up, Madam Chair? I'm assuming it's okay. So through you, Madam Chair, to Mark, so I just want to ask a question to make sure that this policy covers it. So if, in the event that an outside individual has sent an email to either an employee or a trustee of the board on whatever matter that might be, does this policy then cover that person, whether it be the trustee or the employee, taking that email address and then adding that to a distribution list, whether that be newsletter distribution or something to that effect, unsolicited? So they're gonna take that email, they're gonna add it, and they're gonna send information out to that party. Would this policy cover, should this policy prevent that from happening?
Yes, it should, and I explained that in the procedure. If you take a look at the procedure later, there's several requirements. Two of the requirements are, I would use to, if I needed to argue, to say, listen, some activity took place that was considered unauthorized activity based on what took place, and I would use, again, I don't, in front of me right here, right now, but if we look at the procedure later, I believe it's number three and number seven. That's kind of where I'm going, but yes, the answer would be yes, because it's, when you're doing that, so it, we're touching on a privacy incident, and we're touching on security. There's a very closely, they're closely related. So you can use either or, but the security policy, the activity of doing something that is considered unauthorized in terms of using information that is using, utilizing board systems or email accounts, whatever, whatever it is.
And so an incident like that, then, Mark, would fall under the discipline piece that was outlined in this policy?
Yes.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is, it's, it could be to Mark, but actually, it's regarding the feedback itself, so it's actually a research interpretation question. So it could possibly go to Ms. Swinden or Dr. Collins, if she's here. Some of the comments, I kind of struck me. Like one, "Let us not forget, society puts equality before freedom. We'll get neither. Society puts freedom before equality. We get a high degree of both." I don't, this is a comment from one of the people dissatisfied with the changes. So I'm wondering, these comments that we got, and there's a few like that, to you, Mark or Andrea, what do they have to do with information security? Like, I just wonder how they got solicited, because we did get a couple of them like that. If you have a comment on that, thanks.
Yeah, and through you, Madam Chair, Trustee O'Brien. The, yeah, so it's clear, just by some of the feedback, that we have many members of our community that really don't have, they don't understand security. They don't understand cybersecurity, and it shows in the comments. It's not relevant. I mean, the comments are, it sounds like somebody is, people are venting about the, just because they have an opportunity to vent about something. I would like to see how a comment like that, it could be relevant, but they didn't point out, like, there's nothing in that comment, in some of those comments, because I've read them too, and there's nothing that I can incorporate, it really, I mean, you said it yourself.
Okay, so it's probably a misunderstanding of the policy, or what the policy is really about.
Well, I mean, if you read, I mean, it's pretty clear to me, and there were a number of comments that were, it was pretty clear to you, where the goal is to protect, you know, protect the integrity, confidentiality, and availability of HCDSP information. That's the goal. It's high level. The policy, we're not, we're not trying to tell, write a novel in a policy. We want, there's core requirements, and then we use the procedural document to expand and, you know, execute on the procedural requirements. How they didn't understand, I don't know. I'm not sitting in their, in their office or their living room, time of day when they're reading it, and like, there could be a lot of things going on, right? So I can't, I can't control that, those kind of comments, so. They're for cybersecurity, that's what it says, right?
Yeah, so it's probably for another policy on another day. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I am-
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I don't see any other hands up. So that being said, we will move this to a recorded vote. No, trustees, for it to be third, second, and third reading, we need three-quarters vote. So, Trustee O'Brien.
Just a point of clarification. Would it not need three-quarters vote at the board meeting as well?
Well, if it doesn't get it here, yeah, okay. So if we don't agree here, it's gonna go only for second reading, so, so Trustee O'Brien.
Would it not need three-quarters at the board meeting as well? That's what I thought three-quarters meant, in a governance policy.
To pass, it will be recommended, but I would assume, Trustee O'Brien, if we're passing it here and we're agreeing to it here, it'll be agreed to at the board table, right? That's the whole point of this.
Right, but the three-quarters as a pass of the board as well, correct?
You can ask Trustee Duert. He is the chair for the board, so you can ask him that question. I would assume yes, but the recommendation right now, we need three-quarters to bring it forward to the board.
Okay, I vote in favor.
In favor? Trustee, Trustee O'Hern Chenota.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Carabala. Trustee Carabala.
My internets in favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
I believe you, I voted in favor, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Trustee Duert. Sorry, I've got both Ds. Or I can't read, sorry, Trustee Duert.
In favor.
I am also in favor. So the policy will be brought forward for second and third reading to the board table. Thank you, trustees. Moving on to item 6.2, policy V-09, Public Concerns Complaints Process. So trustees, can I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy V-09, Public Concerns Complaints Process, be forwarded to the June 21st, 2022, regular board meeting for approval? Do I have a mover? Trustee Murphy, thank you. Seconded by?
I second it.
Trustee O'Hern Chenota, thank you. Director Daley, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The VO9s presented to trustees for their consideration, there's very few changes. A couple of changes around some clarifying language and tidied up a couple of spots. One addition, addition slash change is on page four of five, the role of Catholic school councils, where we changed the explanation of the role to line up both with policy I-23, so they're consistent, and with our CPIC handbook. So those are the only changes to this policy for consideration this time around. Happy to answer any questions if trustees have them.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustees, I'll open the floor. Is there any questions? Trustee O'Brien, I'm not sure if it's from this round or from, was it from last? Do you have a question? All right, that answers that. Seeing as there's no questions, so we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa.
I'm in favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chenota.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Carabala.
In favor.
I'm also in favor. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Moving on to item 6.3, policy V-18, Community Engagement and Public Consultation Policy. Trustees, can I have somebody please move that the policy committee recommends that policy V-18, Community Engagement and Public Consultation, be forwarded to the June 21st, 2022, regular board meeting for approval?
I'll move it.
Moved by Trustee Agnew, thank you. Seconded by?
Duert.
Trustee Duert, thank you. Ms. Swinden, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm just going to pull this up. Policy VI, V-18, I should say, Community Engagement and Public Consultation, was first adopted by this current Board of Trustees in May of 2019. It's just gone through its first review in the regular review cycle, and staff have taken a look at it and are recommending some minor housekeeping changes throughout. Specifically, the reference to guardians was added, where previously the policy only mentioned parents. So this is more consistent with our language, our current language. And other than that, the policy is still quite, quite relevant, and staff are not recommending any significant changes at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. Trustees, do we have any questions? Seeing, we'll take it to the recorded vote. Trustee Agnew.
For Madam Chair, I have my, I got my hand up, but it was-
Okay, it didn't show up. Sorry about that, Trustee O'Brien. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you through Madam Chair to Ms. Swinton. Ms. Swinton, I, I like the policy. We've been, we've had this discussion before, I know, and about representation. And like presently, we have a hundred and fourteen thousand rate pairs. And our last feedback, we got a hundred and fourteen people responded. And I, which is point one percent. So I know your department is doing everything they can to reach out to everybody. I have no doubt about that. So I, I guess I'd like to ask you a question. Is there anything you need from us to get a better rate pair response? Like, is there, is it a budget item or anything we can do at the board to, to get that percentage up? So that we get a more full-term representation of our rate pairs? Just a question I put out to you. If you have anything to say, I'm, I'm all ears.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Trustee O'Brien. We have had conversations about this, and I'm, I'm on the same page with you. I wish, you know, for certain consultations, I wish we, we would get a better response rate. I think, I, I honestly cannot think of something, budgetary or not, that you could do to help at this point. I think this time of the year, and I know we got a hundred and fourteen responses for the previous policy stakeholder. We don't always get the highest response rates for, for policy stakeholder feedback. For some feedback, we will get a little bit more. I think it depends on the topic. But I also think it's important to remember that we, we send out a lot of requests for feedback, a lot. We've had, just this year, I don't even know how many surveys we've sent out. There is that, a little bit of that survey fatigue, and, and so we're always kind of trying to balance, you know, timing and, and what it is that we're asking and how, you know, we continue to, to use all the avenues we have. We can email directly to parents and to students and to staff. So that's a direct avenue to, to solicit their feedback. We have other ways of getting through to our parish and community members, but, you know, we can't, at the end of the day, force people to respond. And so I think what you'll see is, depending on the topic, there may be a little bit more interest, and so we'll get a lot more response. But beyond that, there's, you know, I cannot think of something that you could do as a trustee, at the trustee level, in terms of budget or otherwise, that would help us with that piece, to reach more people.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, you have a follow up, Trustee O'Brien, or?
No, thank you.
Okay, Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Ms. Swinton, this is just a, with respect to the word guardian, which is essentially the change that's being made. It's understood, is it understood that, that we are talking about legal guardians? And if so, we may want to consider specifying that in the changes being recommended.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Trustee DeRosa. I, I do think it is understood that we are, we are referring to legal guardians, although I, I, there may be instances where they may not be legal guardians, but they are caregivers, temporary caregivers. I think the point is not, not every caregiver is a parent, and so we want to make our language, our wording more inclusive. So this is consistent with everything else that we have across all of our publications, all of our forms. You know, we do refer to, in every message that goes out, we, dear parents and guardians. So it's, it's consistent in that way. I don't think, I mean, I don't think we need to add legal guardians to make it any more clear. I think the point is, is just to be more inclusive in our wording, so that it's understood that we may not be talking to the parents, we may be talking to the grandparents, we may be talking to a temporary caregiver.
Yeah, my follow up, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it is possible then that a non-legal guardian may be acting on behalf of the student?
I, I wouldn't say that. I, I would say that it's possible that we are sending communication to someone who is, has temporary caregiver status for the, for the students that are attending our schools. That's what I would say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm done.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, trustees. So we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
And I am also in favor. So that is seven in favor, one opposed. The policy will be sent to the next board meeting. That's, that ends it for our action items. We'll move on to item seven, Discussion Items, seven point one, Advisory Authority of School Councils and Duty to Respond. So this was, comes from a motion that was brought back to policy, or brought to policy from the board table. And it is a motion that has come forward from CPIC titled Advisory Authority of School Council and the Duty of the Board to Respond. So it's referred here to policy, so for us to review and consider. So is it possible, do we actually have the, the resolution that's come from CPIC? We do have that. I'll bring it up just a moment, please. Thank you, Claudia.
Can we just scroll down to the BEAT resolved?
Yep. Keep going if you don't mind. Oh, no, up a little bit, up a little bit. Right there, right there. There we go. So, so what we're looking at is that the, the Parent Involvement Committee recommended that the board at any future, board, that any future school council recommendations be included on the board meeting agenda as an action item for a decision on the action to be taken in response to the recommendation and communication to the school council, in accordance with Section twenty one of Regulation six one two of the Education Act. So I think what's important, we'll start the discussion, but I think one of the things we'll have to refer to is our bylaws. So first and foremost, action items in our bylaws and, and procedure wise. So we have to make sure, I don't think the way it's written can just be implemented. But I'll start the conversation off. Let's see who we've got first in chat. So we've got Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a Madam Chair. I'm, I'm looking at this motion, and I went through our policies, and I tried to find where it could be implemented in policy. And I honestly could not find a policy where it would fit in. If you could lead us in that, or if somebody else, one of our other trustees knows where mine fit in. I actually thought complaint process would be the closest thing, which we just passed. However, I don't think every recommendation is a complaint. So I, I would hope we don't have to, to generate a whole policy on this. And I'm not sure if we could just put it into our bylaws somewhere. Your, I do think an action item might be just a bit too radical place to put it, but maybe some other place like other boards do. So again, Madam Chair, if you know a policy where it may fit, I, I'd be really open to hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee Brian. In regards to our committee, oh, oh, I've got feedback there. In regards to our, or regarding our our committees and recommendations, our bylaws speak to standing committees and statutory committees and their roles. And there is no, there is no policy that this would fall under, particularly the way it's written. Because action items are brought forward, they're recommendations that are either by notices, emotions from trustees directly, or recommendations from staff for moving the business of the board forward. So to, to jump the whole process, there isn't anything that we have that addresses that at this point, that I see that would fit. So I hope that answers your question, Trustee O'Brien?
It does. As a starting point of discussion, I guess we are starting at ground zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So similar to Trustee O'Brien, I had the same. I also took some time to go through to, to try to figure out where we could put this, for all of those reasons that have just been discussed. So, you know, looking at our current bylaws, looking at the way that action items are brought forward. I, I could not find somewhere to put it, and I, I know that, you know, probably the idea of creating a new policy may seem a little bit time-consuming and laborious. It, it might be something for us to consider. I, given the importance of this recommendation, and that it's, you know, it's come from CPIC, I think, you know, we've had a larger conversation at the board table as well about other advisory committees bringing things forward. I, I do think we need to find the right mechanism to be able to properly address this BEAT resolve. So, you know, again, I, I don't know. It seems like we're a bit stumped to see where it would actually go, because I think that we do need to have some procedures attached to it as well, to make sure that the process is fluid and easy to follow, and that there's no barriers put up, and that we, you know, again, that we do what we need to do. So, you know, maybe I'm putting it out there that failing the ability to find out where to put this, that perhaps my fellow trustees, we do consider whether or not we need a new, a new policy to deal with this specific request. That's my thoughts on it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. I, I, I kind of concur with you in regards to not sure where it would fit in, and I think it would be, if we apply it to one, we must apply it to all committees. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm not seeing the difficulty of not knowing where to place it. It's, it's a regulation, so it should be dealt with and followed and placed somewhere. Whether, as it came out at the board meeting, that other school boards have that section on their agenda, which could be brought to our bylaw review committee and consider that as one option. And because it's part of the regulation, we should be following it, and CPIC did vote unanimously to, to send this to us. I want to respect what school councils and CPIC want to bring forward to the board. I think we should, I think we should follow the regulation and put this into practice, that they have a vehicle to bring their to bring their recommendations to our board and that we respond. And being a response makes it an action item. So if maybe there's a two-step process that first come in as a, a report from CPIC and then come as an action item two weeks later, that could be one, one way of looking at it as well.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. And you know what I've done? I've pulled up Section twenty one of Regulation six one two. What it says is, "The board that established a school council shall consider each recommendation made to the board by the council and shall advise the council of the action taken in response to the recommendation." It doesn't say that it needs to be, come to the table as an action item. It just needs to, it's, it's about responding. So I want to make sure that we're looking at the regulation as it's written. It doesn't say that it comes to the board as an action item. So we'll move on to the next person here. We've got Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think that's an important distinction. So, so it was assumed or implied that the board has to pass a resolution to respond, but that doesn't mean it's an action item. It could be passing a resolution to respond to a discussion item or to an information item. So there's, yeah, there's a few challenges with the way the motion is, is written technically that we'd have to overcome. I think there's some procedural issues that could be problematic. So it, it came from CPIC, but it includes all school councils. So you could have an example where the school council brings forward a motion that the principal of the school is opposed to. So that, really, it should be in conjunction with the school principal and should be, it should be vetted that way. So I, I think what, the way we should handle it or look at it is that we, in our bylaw review committee, we change our order of business, and we add items coming from committee. And that, those would be discussion or information items. And then they're brought to the table, they're discussed at that time. From that, a motion to create an action item could come, or it could be a response that we've received it as information, or there'll be further discussion on it. So if it, if it comes straight, right as a motion, as you know, all of us know, there, there isn't time to do a lot of research and, and to fully understand. So to me, it's very problematic coming as a motion, but I think we should, it, it's an important matter. We need to hear from the parent councils, from CPIC. It needs to be done in an orderly way, because, you know, if we have fifty-plus school councils all coming forward with, with their own individual requests, demands, or ideas, it could be very challenging. So there has to be a vetting process or something more procedural to it. But I think the way to, to handle it would be to change our order of a business, order of business on our bylaws and have information coming from committee, and those would be discussion or information items.
Thanks, Trustee Murphy. So, so far, we've, we've got create a new policy, we've got change bylaws to allow for information from for committees. Okay, moving on, the next speaker is Trustee O'Hern Trinota. Just of note too, as well, I think we need to also remember that we shouldn't be, you know, this is coming from CPIC as a committee, but that the ask is actually about school councils. So, Trustee O'Hern Trinota.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So I have a couple of things about this. The first one being that school councils, you know, the way they work or, you know, and should be working are collaborative with the principals and with the schools. CPIC represents the school council. So, so in my head, this is problematic to me, because in, in my opinion, I think if there needs to be, you know, an action item or something that's not getting resolved, to me, it should come through CPIC. That's the way some of our other committees are run. And my second comment would be, this is, CPIC is the voice of our councils, but I believe that I asked that specific question at the board meeting, and all of our school councils were not surveyed in regards to this specific resolution, motion, albeit. So I think it has some problems in two areas. And I'm not quite sure what to do with it right now, but I, I don't think it's a quick fix at all. I think we'd be making a mistake.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Trinota. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know,
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, attentively listening to the discussion here. I, the whole thing seems overly too complicated to me. In essence, the issue here is that we have parents wanting to make a recommendation. And whatever procedure makes the board comfortable in handling that recommendation, there is no, there is no question in my mind that one of, one of our key roles is to listen to the parents. So this, to me, is not a complicated issue. It's, it doesn't presume that if you, if you accepted this motion or passed this motion, doesn't presume that we would necessarily implement whatever the recommendation was. But we owe, we owe a duty in our role to listen to the recommendations and to listen to the voice of the parents. I heard that being stated many, many times, but this is a good way to put it into practice. So, you know, for those who want to complicate and, and dig into the weeds of the procedural issues of this, the law, the, the Education Act requires that we respond, and that that should be our primary guide. If our policies or our bylaws are out of sync, then let's do what's necessary to correct them. But under no circumstances, let's not, let's not get mired in the weeds of this discussion and forget what our duty is, and that's to listen to the parents. Not to guarantee a yes, but to listen to the parents. So I would invite my fellow trustees to look at this from that perspective. Thank you.
Moving on down the list, I think everybody has spoken. Trustee O'Brien, are you back in the queue?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. So going back to the regulation, I think it's important to keep coming back to, because that's what we're responding to, and that's what we must fulfill in some way. It does say that "The board that established a school council shall consider each recommendation made to the board by the council and shall advise the council of the action taken in response to the recommendation." So there is no option. It is a, a shall, so that is something we have to do. A motion can't, could come out of it. Something has to come out and respond. So I think at the end of this discussion, we, there has to be some mechanism that we do respond. Doesn't have to be a yes, doesn't, it doesn't even need an explanation. Like I said before, it could be one word, but there has to be a response to at least cover our, our legal requirements. Now, the board is set up that no person in the board can respond on their own, so I, I can't see how it can come without a vote, unless, of course, we leave it to the discretion of the chair, because some things are left to the chair. I don't know. So I put that out. But at the end of the day, that recommended, that regulation has to be filled. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. And again, just want to, want to clarify. I don't think I'm hearing anybody saying that there shouldn't be a response. I think it's how it's being interpreted, the regulation, whether it comes as an action item or not. And that's not the way it's written. Trustee O'Hern Tronota, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask a question through you too, Superintendent Denalpo, if she's on the line. I just want to know, just for my own information, information, if there's an issue at school councils through the principal, and it, and it's not getting resolved. Has that gone to CPIC in the past? And to what degree, if you could speak to that?
Good evening, and through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the question, Trustee Herzonota. So what, what has happened in the past, over the past two years with CPIC? We have had some Catholic school councils come to us for concern about something that happened at the school. I can give you like two examples. One is around cafeterias and what, if they were up and running. One was around lunchtime schedules. And last year was around the pride flag. Okay, so councils brought that concern to CPIC. It was shared through the chairs of CPIC. And then we went back to the couns, to the councils, together with the superintendent of that family of schools, to, to resolve, to come up with some collaborative resolve to the concern. So for example, for the lunchtimes that was happening, there was a concern around lunchtime schedule for secondary. It went back, there was a discussion, and there was a resolve based on the input that the parents had given to the principal, together with the superintendent, then there was a resolve for it. So most of our effort is to be collaborative when a school council comes forward to CPIC. I think all the Catholic school councils tried to work collaboratively with the school principals. I think that's the best resolution of how things can move forward. But at times, there could be things that they need the support or the guidance of, of CPIC. And CPIC will listen, but give them an opportunity to go back to their principal to resolve. I think that's what the, sort of the code of ethics is, that they work collaboratively. I think CPIC also has the same code of ethics, that all resolutions are to be resolved collaboratively. But at times, things may not be. So how do we move forward with that? And I do think, you know, we, we can do it collaboratively. But I think what's been, the motion that's been presented through a member of CPIC is, what happens if we don't? And how do we move forward if we don't?
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee O'Hern Tronota, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Trustee Carabella, are you back in the queue?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Go ahead, Trustee Carabella.
Well, I just wanted to echo what Trustee O'Brien said, that we really have to look at that regulation that, and it's quite clear that school councils can make recommendations directly to the board. So not through the principal and not even through CPIC, but they could go directly to the board. And so, yeah, I just think it's super important, and we can find a mechanism to get that done. So like, I'm, I'm all for finding a mechanism, and it could be that, again, I said, adding the section on our agenda, which we could do. And, and then, you know, a motion could come out of it if we have to respond as a board, which is what we do. So I, 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 I really don't see, some, some things are not school level, but the school council wants to bring them to the board level, and I think that's fair. They should have that opportunity if they try and resolve it, or it doesn't get resolved, or if it's an issue that should just come to the board as well. So I think they should be given that opportunity, and we should follow the regulation.
Moving on to, Trustee O'Brien, do you have your hand up again? No, okay.
I do. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so can I ask? I don't have.
I know that there are some, I hear how many issues, putting it under action items, because that is a place reserved for board motions. I know that there are some boards that have things like, you know, matters recommended from statutory committees. Could we, could we put it in another section of our board meeting? That way, it would be a bylaw issue, not a whole new policy. Just an idea, putting it out there.
Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what is the logical next step that we're looking for with respect to this, this issue? Do we need a motion to put it forward to the board for approval? Or I'm not quite sure what the next step is, Madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, so there's, there's one of two things. It's, it can be, I think we heard one thing, which was Trustee Murphy suggested changing the bylaws to allow for an information piece in the agenda on board meetings, that would be changing the bylaws. Or the other thing was Trustee Agnew suggested us creating a policy to deal with these so that everybody has a process on, on how it's established. So at this point, it's a discussion item. It doesn't need to go back to the board for the, to create a policy. To create a policy, we can do that here, because then it goes to the board for, for out reading, stakeholder feedback. If we're changing the bylaw, it could be done again through here and then recommended. But we're also in the process of amending our bylaws as it is, so that could be part of that process. So really, it is up to however the trustees want to deal with this. At this point, it is only a discussion. So I leave it up to, to how everybody wants to proceed.
So can I suggest that a recommendation to the board to, to respond to this motion? Go to the board and at the next board meeting?
Well, y, y, no, because it's been, the board's already sent it to us to deal with. So you've already, that's already happened at the last board meeting, right? This was brought forward, and it was, it's been referred to us to deal with. Because either way, it either needs to involve, like I just said, an amendment to the bylaw or, or a new policy to create specifically to address this. I, I understand that regulation, everybody feels that regulations, not everybody, a couple of people feel that Regulation 612, Section 21 requires that it's an action item. That's actually not what it says. It does say that there has to be a response to the recommendation, what action was taken in response to the recommendation. So it's very different than saying it goes on as an action item at the table. So, so we wouldn't be referring it back, Trustee DeRosa, long and short.
So, Madam Chair, all along, I've been talking, I've been thinking that we owe, I, I don't know how long the response has been outstanding for now, but I think that we have an obligation to respond. I'm, I'm not opposed to handling the procedural matters at, at some other date or as a consequence of this recommendation. But we need to respond to CPIC, because that is the, that's what's being asked for, is a response.
I, you know what, Trustee DeRosa, I would have hoped that the trustees that are actually CPIC members, like on the CPIC committee, would have communicated that when it got referred back to policy. I would be happy to send a response to, to CPIC to let them know that it is at the policy committee. But I can't send an email on behalf of the board that would be, that would fall under the purview of the chair. The chair or the committee members from CPIC should actually follow up with CPIC to let them know what is happening with it.
Yeah, I think there's.
That's why we're committee members on, on, that's, that's why we have, that's why we sit on different committees, right?
Right, of course. But I think what's being requested is a response from the board, and maybe it belongs to the chair to respond on our behalf. But a response is due. I don't think we can, in good conscience, further delay a response to this request. And I would be a very strong proponent subsequent to that to putting, to following the procedural or amending the procedural matters. I need to be amended to make sure that this thing, this, this thing is dealt with, including stakeholder survey, if that's the case. But let's get them a response from the board, which is what is being requested, and then deal with the matter in detail.
Okay, thank you, Trustee.
My recommendation, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So I, I, I think we just, I just want to be clear that no one's trying to delay responding, and I, I hear the duty to respond. We want to respond, and, and I agree with you that by us having this conversation, we're trying to respond. So no one's trying to, to circumvent that process. I just want to make that very clear. I haven't heard one person around this table tonight actually say that they don't agree with this, with this request. We're all trying to find the best way to deal with this. And we know that historically, if something is not procedurally sound, or we haven't done the due diligence the right way to do something, we run into problems, right? So I think we're just trying to make sure that we are doing this the right way. So when I heard some of the examples, and, and I don't know that going to a new policy is the answer. That was just a suggestion, and Trustee DeRosa just commented about going out for stakeholder feedback, if that was something, and that would be part of that process. But, you know, if we're going to put this into our bylaws, we know we're going through a bylaw review process. You know, that is absolutely an option. But again, I guess, I think the question would be, is if we're going to do that, there has to be some parameters around how that's going to work. So, you know, this is, so councils are not statutory committees. So, you know, what does that item look like on the, on the agenda? What are we calling it? How does the process work? I just think that there has to be some pieces there. So if the decision tonight is that the best place to put this is under our bylaws as in addition to the agenda, that's fine, if that's the will of the trustees. But it still needs some further clarification and conversation, but exactly how that works, because there is still some other things that have been brought up tonight. So, you know, recommendation comes forward. What's the role of the principal in that? What's the role of, you know, some of the other members in that? Sorry, Trustee DeRosa, can you just turn your mic off?
Yep.
Thank you so much. So those are some things that I think we need to think about. I just want to make sure that if we are going to put something in place for our advisory committees or for our school councils to bring forward recommendations, that like I said earlier, they don't encounter any barriers to do so, and that the, the process is transparent and, and easy to, to follow. So again, if the will of the trustees is to put this into bylaw, i, if that's an option, let's do that. But how do we do that? And what does that look like, would be my other questions. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Murphy, so I'm going to do one more round of this discussion item, and then we'll kind of summarize it. Trustee Murphy, go ahead.
Thank you. To Trustee Agnew's point, I, I think it, you're, you're almost a two-pronged, right? You're, you're, we need to amend our, our order of business, which is our bylaw. But there needs to be more procedure around committees bringing the information forward. So I think it's, it's not one solution. It's kind of two-pronged. The other issue is that, so we have in our response to delegation currently in our meeting, and the only official response, or the, sorry, the only official notification that goes directly to a delegate is if we receive their delegation for information. So then the secretary of the board sends a letter notifying them of that. Really, it should, it should be, there should be notification of the result, which would satisfy the regulation that this, for example, in this case, that the request was referred to policy. So it would be, at the end, the next day, the secretary sends out notification to that delegate, this is what happened to your delegation. It's assumed that they know that, but not necessarily the case, and it doesn't, that would fulfill the regulation. So that's something I think we should look at potentially implementing, that we respond to all delegates and give them what, what happened at the meeting. Because again, necessarily, they may not, we assume that they know, but they may, they may not know.
Thanks, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that as trustee representative on CPIC, I, I update CPIC on what the status of this motion is, and I will do so at the next meeting. And the duty to respond, Madam Chair, should be only after the matter is dealt with. So right now, we are still working on it. It's work in progress, and once it's dealt with, CPIC can be informed through proper channels. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Duert. I, I, I understand, and I appreciate that. But my understanding is, this was actually discussed at a CPIC meeting back in March. So I think that's part of the issue that we're having tonight. Trustee Duert, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe Trustee O'Brien. I know both of you sit on the CPIC. I think that's the issue, right? It's, it's been a long time. So, you know, to the point of responding, there's nothing wrong with saying, you know, it will be brought to the board. It's now, there's nothing wrong with this, saying that we've sent it, the board has sent it to policy for further review discussion. So I would ask that maybe yourself or Trustee O'Brien send out some sort of communication, at least to the chair, saying that this is what's happening.
Will do.
CPIC. And then I can do the same to say that this is where we're at.
Will do. Thanks.
Thanks, Trustee Duert. Moving on to Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you. Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I.
Um, I really um, liked trustee Murphy's idea of, of bringing it to bylaws. And he was kind of getting in some of the um, parameters around that even just as he was speaking. Um, I also like how trustee Agnew said that it has to be something clear cut. Cause I can see how it, it could be um, I won't say misused, but um, if, if there isn't really a real procedure for this, i- it could maybe get a little bit um, murky as how it comes to the board. Um, and I like how people brought up the principal. I, I've never been on a parent council, I've only sat on one as ch- as a teacher. And um, could there be a process where the principal is involved too? And um, I think all those things have to be worked out. Um, and chair, you said, maybe it could be brought back to policy for a response. Like, I never even thought of that. I, I think that's a really um, very such suggestion too. Um, but I do think it needs to go back to bylaws to get the pers- get the procedure iron out. Um, to go through a whole policy right now, I think would be too kind of time considering, considering we need to respond to this. I mean, not respond, but to, to get it something in place fairly soon. Thank you, madam chair. I'm ready.
Thank you trustee O'Brien and trustee DeRosa. And this will end it for this discussion. We're gonna, we're gonna wrap it up. So trustee DeRosa?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, no, I think, I think we've, I've said everything I have to say about this. And I'm hopeful that this issue can get the attention it deserves so that it can be resolved. Thank you.
Madam chair, I did have my hand up.
Okay, sorry about that trustee Carabala. I'm trying to manage people using hand up in the chat.
Oh, I see, okay.
I'm trying to keep track.
Good point of privilege. What do you prefer us to use? I asked that at the beginning of the meeting and didn't get a response.
I did respond. I said chat is fine. Um, right after, so let's pick one trustees. Let's use the hands up just because it's easier. Cause everybody seems to be, because it's being conditioned to use that now. So go ahead trustee Carabala and then uh, we'll move forward.
Right, so I'm not sure where we're at. I just want to put in my, my um, my hope. And I see a good direction in going for this to go into our agenda. So whatever needs to happen to um, have a space for statutory committees um, on our agenda. Their um, their recommendations or whatever they want to tell us. Um, I really think that it should go there. So whatever we need to do to do that, that's what I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Uh, thank you trustee Carabala. But I just want to point out, that's actually not what the ask is though. The ask is for school councils to be able to um, uh, their communication, recommendation communications from school councils be put on as um, action items as well. So um, okay, so trustees, we've had a good discussion. So tomorrow is bylaw uh, review. So I think trustee Murphy, if you can, as the chair, are you okay to maybe have a discussion about that tomorrow? And I will let anybody, uh, trustees are, are more than aware that if you want to create a policy, um, that you can and that we can move forward with that. So um.
We um, we put it on um, uh, when we come to review the order of business. Um, I'm not sure if we'll get to it tomorrow. It, well, it's up to trustees. If you want to move it up in the discussion, we can. I was hoping to get through the final recommendations for a, uh, that a tool did for us. And then we can then look at um, all of the, those other changes and verbiages and what have you. And it would kind of come up in that discussion. But it's up to, once we uh, we approve the agenda, if, if somebody wants to move it forward and everybody agrees, then that's fine, we can do that.
Okay, okay. So I'll leave it, and then uh, sorry, go ahead trustee DeRosa.
My apologies for uh, stepping in. I'd just like to add to uh, trustee Murphy's uh, comment uh, to say that uh, uh, we should make it priority uh, tomorrow. And have a, a fulsome discussion over this so that we can get it resolved and move on with it. Uh, I consider it, and I'm sure others feel the same way, at a, a very important issue to deal with. So if there's the opportunity to move it up, put it on the agenda for tomorrow, that would be great.
Uh, thank you trustee DeRosa. So uh, trustee Murphy, I will, not to put it on to you, but because that is, that discussion is happening there and uh, uh, parliamentarian Kapoor is there, maybe he can help guide and see what best way to add it, to amend the bylaw. And if it doesn't work, we can look at uh, creating a policy. Does that sound?
No problem, you just have to, somebody has to move a motion and we agree to add it to the agenda, that's fine. That's all we have to do and then we can have that discussion.
Are you okay with that trustee Murphy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, trustees, are we good with that? Okay, all right. Okay, so we're going to, thank you. So we're going to move on to the uh, item added on to our uh, agenda by trustee Carabala. So this is item seven point two. So this is um, information dignity and privacy during a medical emergency. So trustee uh, Carabala, go ahead.
Thank you so much, madam chair. And thank you trustees, fellow trustees for uh, uh, voting to put this on. Uh, I was approached by a parent and um, concerning uh, the dignity and privacy of students or, or staff, really anybody, when a health emergency happens at school. So um, could be breaking your arm or fainting or something that the emergency services are called to the school. And as they're coming in or the student is compromised in the classroom or wherever they are hurt, uh, that students take out their phone and record what's happening and record uh, the student in, in, or staff, or maybe it could even be a parent who's ever at the school property. Um, and then it could be also like in the hallways, they're waiting as the um, em- emergency services take the um, person to the ambulance. And again, filming is going on. And what has happened in the past is that then these films show up on social media. Uh, furthering um, you know, distress to the person who was injured. So um, and the parent was asking about what's, what protocols we have in place to, to um, try and protect the dignity and privacy of the medical health information of the compromised or injured student or staff. So um, I thought that um, I would bring this here to discuss if this is in our protocols or in our procedures and where it is or if it's something we should be bringing forward at a future policy meeting. Um, and fitting it in or, or having a discussion about it. And also like what would be, what are the current protocols uh, when emergency services are, are, are at our schools? Um, is, I understand an incident report or what? And is there any, any measures taken if uh, filming is put on social media and uh, students are asked not to do that? Or are they asked to stay in their classrooms while the emergency services do their work? Uh, without using their phones or I, I just wanted to get clarity around this issue. So that's, that's why I'm bringing it forward. So if there's someone here who can speak to that.
So there's um, so in discussing with superintendent Pekic, we could look at uh, policy V dash zero five, school accidents. And I'll maybe have uh, superintendent Pekic talk about that policy.
Thank you and through you, madam chair. And thank you trustee Carabala for bringing the concern forward. So we do have a number of um, policies and procedures that would um, inform the practice and what happens when um, an emergency call is made. We do have V oh five, student accidents. We have VI seventy-four, risk management for state. We also have VI eighty-one, privacy uh, procedure. So in the case of student illness or injury and when a nine one one call is made requiring emergency services, school staff and EMS staff make every effort to protect the student's privacy while still ensuring that emergency procedures are followed. And you did actually provide some examples trustee Carabala that the schools do follow. For example, depending on the location of the student, um, classrooms can be cleared, hallways are cleared. Um, and again, it depends on the illness or the accident that has occurred and the individual involved. Um, in this instance, it would be no different than any other circumstance where taking a photo or video of someone, including someone suffering from an illness or accident, requires consent by the individual. And in particular, in this case, it would not be appropriate and would be addressed at the school level uh, through the school superintendent and the principal and um, the necessary uh, consequences through our uh, progressive discipline. Uh, procedures would also um, apply. So without any further specific information, um, I can, I can offer that.
Thank you very much. I'm um, so glad I brought this forward and um, can have those policies to refer the parent to as well. So I really um, am grateful for your response. I don't know if um, anyone has anything else to comment or ask regarding this. Um, has it, um, is, okay, so that, I guess if a student, then you're right, you're saying if they, they videotape without consent and post it on social media, then there are um, progressive discipline measures that could be taken if that student is identified whoever posts it.
That's correct trustee Carabala.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee O'Brien and then trustee Agnew.
Um, madam chair. Madam chair, I, I would draw my hand because superintendent Pekic covered it all. It, that's all under progressive discipline, any filming that's, that leads to victimization. So I would draw my hand, thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. Uh, trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. And through you, madam chair. I just wanted to give um, a, a bit of context as well that um, there was an incident that happened at one of our high schools um, last week. And um, uh, it was handled much the way that superintendent Pekic commented. So the schools, you know, uh, the, the kids were directed to stay in the classrooms. They were directed to keep their phones away. Um, you know, definitely the dignity of the person that had been affected by the medical situation um, was being protected and that was first and foremost um, with staff. So I just, you know, I, I think again, for context, it sounds like um, in addition to the policies that we do have in place with respect to videotaping or any of the other um, concerns that our, our schools are actually making sure that um, those students who have been impacted by some sort of emergency are being protected. And that was really, that was really good to hear. Um, so just wanted to give that feedback.
Thanks trustee Agnew. Um, all right, um, I think trustee Carabala, we're good to move on?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So moving now on to item eight point one, uh, information items. We've got eight point one to eight point five. Um, those are um, so we've got uh, our procedures and actually eight point five is our policy summary report for this past uh, year. Um, so now we'll move into, and I just lost my eScribe logged me out. So hold on one second, sorry about that. My apologies everyone. I guess it was um, sorry, we've got the policy summary report. So moving on to item nine miscellaneous information, we have none.
Sorry madam chair, I did my hand up for some of the policies, I mean the procedures.
Okay.
One in particular, um, V one sixty, um, student groups in schools. And uh, if superintendent Nara is here, just have a few questions for her. It's the procedure.
Go ahead and go ahead with your questions trustee O'Brien, we'll figure out what to go.
Um, one thing that struck out is um, the Catholic Church respects all individuals. I, I just wonder why that was struck out.
Can you be, can you tell us what page you're looking at trustee O'Brien of the policy?
I'm sorry, it's a procedure and I, I did write down the page number. Oh, it's in the first sentence under purpose, madam chair.
Okay. Sorry superintendent Nara?
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening everyone and uh, through you, madam chair. Um, so we just revised the language in that. So it's, we didn't take it out because we don't think that we respect all individuals. But we just cleaned up the language to make it um, uh, reflect uh, our current language that's in our equity and inclusive education policies. Um, so it goes on to talk about how um, we recognize all people are created equal in the image of God. Um, so it, it still has the same meaning, um, but it's cleaner language um, that reflects our, our other current policies.
Thank you superintendent Nara, trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
I do, uh, page two, um, what is critical connection?
Uh, so I'm just looking at where.
I'm sorry, I want to pause. Critical connection, I saw that um, under.
First bullet.
First bullet. Oh yes, to strengthen and promote students' social justice, critical connection.
Sorry, uh, yes, so critical connection. So connections um, uh, with students with each other and to be able to make those connections to our social justice, our Catholic social teachings, equity. So it's about making those connections. So we actually should probably put an S on the end of that uh, uh, connection.
Okay, and my third question was on page four, um, right after the word in service, there are several church documents struck out. Um, is that because those documents are now obsolete?
Uh, so the, the documents that we removed out of under references, I think you're looking at, is that correct? So um, the documents that were taken out of there, we're referencing specifically um, GSAs. Because this policy or this procedure was originally uh, put in place when GSAs were adopted in our Catholic schools back in two thousand and twelve. And we've decided to turn this into a more general procedure to reflect um, student, all student groups in schools. So we removed those ones because they were more specific to GSAs. Um, and then we inserted um, some more recent ones, um, namely Christus Vivit and uh, the Directory for Catechesis from two thousand and twenty.
Thank you superintendent Nara. And madam chair, one question to mark regarding um, procedures for um, information security. And it's just kind of a, maybe an oversight. In, in the policy, the line, conduct your work only unauthorized systems is struck out. But in the procedure, it's still there.
Yeah, so through you, ma- madam chair and trustee O'Brien. Uh, yeah, so that, that, that's more of a procedural requirement. Uh, one of, some of the comments sort of reflected that and I wanted to keep the, the security more, more high level. Uh, so authorized systems is really, you know, not everybody has, not everybody has a computer that's been issued to them, but they may log into an authorized system like their, my Office three sixty-five account. So we have to keep it someplace. And so it, it's in the procedure, it's not directly in the policy and that's by design.
So a person could still use their own s- device?
Y- yes, so that, I want to be clear on that, that you, you can, you, you can log in, log in and, and through when you're, when you're following that process. Yeah, you have to also uh, uh, leverage the uh, what's called multi-factor authentication. So you would get a, 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 a temporary number on your, on your phone that which allows you to connect. So you can log in and I want to be clear on that because sometimes not everybody has a computer, not everybody has a smartphone that's been issued to them. But you can log into the system using your personal device. Now, where we have to be careful is, is, and this is what I'm going to, as I roll the policy, the procedure and the policy. Now, where we have to be careful is, is, and this is what I'm going to, as I roll the policy, the procedure and the policy, we'll talk more about the, how to actually follow it. So. Do you have?
The procedure, okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if the policy doesn't have that in it, the procedure does. I wonder if it's misleading. Because I noticed that the feedback did indicate that some people did not believe that it was a good thing to make that mandatory. And I thought you were reacting to that through the feedback. Then I saw in the procedure that it's still in there, but it's not in the policy. And I just.
Yeah. The procedure supports the policy. So it's an extension of the policy. The policy should be high level. And the procedure is the more granular activities that, or the granular requirements. So I, I, I don't think it's, I think, I think that the, once you read the procedure, you'll know, okay, that's, that's what they're talking about. I, I don't, I'm not sure I follow why it's misleading. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I know, I guess because it's struck out.
Just to clarify though, you, and Mark is correct, right? Policy, the policy is the governance piece. The procedure is the procedural aspect of it, right? The, the actual implementation piece. So that's why it would be more detailed than it was in the policy. Sorry, trustee O'Brien, do you have any other questions?
Well, I, I'm still kind of. So I just sort of, it does say, what struck out is conduct your work only unauthorized applications and systems. That actually is struck out. So you're saying it struck out because you didn't think it fitted in the policy?
So it's a fair question trustee O'Brien. I, 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 I'm trying to keep our policies really high level. So where it goes, I mean, really the, the procedural aspect, the, 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 the procedure itself is what employees will have to follow. So we have, and in the, in the policy, I do state that it supports, like follow all the prescribed behaviors as, and I don't know the exact words in front of me here, as per the, the procedure that accompanies it.
So a person could still use their own device as long as it's plugged into our system, correct?
I just. Yes, so they don't, there's only some, so there's only, there's not a lot of scenarios where that happens. Like we have our Microsoft 365 or Office 365 accounts. And, oh, and there's also Google accounts. So if you have a Gmail account through the, the board issue Gmail account, you're logging in through a browser, right? You go to a browser and you log in, you put your username and password. You're logging into that cloud-based system. You, you, it's, it's not required to have a device that the board issues to you. You can, you can log in through your personal device. I talked to Bill, it's allowed. And it's, it's important that we, it's important that staff and employees are aware of that. So I, I, I don't know where else you want me to go.
No, no, I, you, you be clear. So just be concrete. If I am traveling and I use my phone, that's okay. As opposed to my laptop issued by the board.
Yes, if you have, if you have, if you've logged into your, installed the, the, the Office 365 app on your, if you have an iPhone or, or if you have an Android and you've connected through and you've followed the protocols that Bill and his team have in place to access. You can't just log in with just your password. There's some other controls that are embedded in the process to connect. Now, can you, if you're in, if you're in Florida, I don't think you'll be able to connect because what I think we're, it's set up just for access in, in, within Canada. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Director Daley, I see you have your hand up.
And I'm off. Yeah, I was just going to suggest, and I think Mark, Mark finished up with that. Regardless of how we connect with the system, whether it's through a board-supported device or a personal device, the, the policies still apply. So the, kind of the, the security precautions that we want to have in place to make sure we, we protect the security both of the board and our own privacy and security. They're still under consideration, whether or not it's a board-issued device or a personal device. The policy still applies in either circumstance. So I think that's important, that's important to note.
Thank you, Director Daley. Okay, so we're going to move on. Item nine miscellaneous information, there are none, there is none. Number 10 correspondence, there is none. Item 11, no need to move into camera. And item 12, can I have a motion to excuse trustee Intomasi?
I will move, Madam Chair.
Moved by trustee DeRosa, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Carabella.
Trustee O'Brien, thank you. Everybody jumped in on that one. Where was all the excitement earlier? Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 13, motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I will move, Madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, thank you. Seconded by.
I'll second that.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta, thank you. Anybody opposed? All right, thanks, everyone. Trustee O'Hern Chernotta, can you lead us in our closing prayer?
It would be my pleasure, Madam Chair. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Jesus, journey the summer with us. Be with us as we sink our toes into the sand, hike through the mountains and play on the playgrounds. Laugh with us when our kids' gobbles are too big. Sit with us on the porch swings and pool sides, beaches and bicycles. Run with us in the sunshine and sit with us in the shade. And Jesus, when the days of rains come or the heat gets to be too much, rest with us. Wherever our summertime quest takes us, never let us forget to find you in all things. Remind us that you're always with us, no matter where we roam. And inspire in us a desire to seek you out in every new place, every new church, new destination. Because in finding you, we find our home. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening and a great rest of the week.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.